Yeah.
That's 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 something.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning all.
Morning.
Called the meeting to order and. I guess we're going to amend. This thing add a couple of items. With the interviews that took place. Last week or the week before for the janitor, we are going to make an appointment for the full time and the part time positions. And was there any something else that?
We need to remove the minutes because we don't have the minutes for last week.
Okay, we'll remove those, um, anything else? You good Ben? You don't have any changes?
No. So janitor, remove minutes, good enough.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve as amended.
All right, so we have a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
In a second, any discussion, all in favor, I?
Aye.
Those same sign, motion carries. Uh. I guess we skip the next, we have the claim sitting here.
I got two hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-three cents on general. That's two, three, three, six, four, five point forty-three. Drainage twenty-three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty cents, two, three, nine, nine point eight oh.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second for the said numbers, any other discussion, all in favor, I?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carry. General public concern. But in Zoom. Anybody, don't hear anything. Um, sorry Ben.
Morning.
Morning.
Busy weekend.
Yes, it was, but you guys are going nuts.
Yeah, yeah, we were in, uh, we were in every day.
Good work.
Yeah.
Yep, we have, uh, we have a good group, we have dedicated guys that spent the night at county shops to make sure that they're be able to pass no. Get guys out. And we had a couple of guys that got stuck trying to get into the shops that. Because we had people spending the night, we were able to go out and get them in. Yeah, we ran every night or every day and, uh, I think Friday was the only day that we ended up pulling off because of this.
We couldn't even see our neighbors crossroad and that was in town.
Yeah.
It hasn't been that bad for years. I'll tell your guys, thank you very much.
We did a press release this morning too.
Yeah.
What time did you go out this morning?
Normal time, so, uh, guys were there pulling out about seven thirty.
Oh.
So. Um. I I guess I didn't see anybody else taking off earlier.
Yeah, I was outside about seven fifteen, twenty, and seen him already and I was out early.
Mike was out already.
Yeah.
Uh, yesterday we ran basically just blacktops. Uh, just a couple of items for the agenda, uh, the first is to approve a price quote for our yearly license of. AutoCAD Civil three D. For twenty-two hundred and sixty dollars and forty-eight cents.
That's same price as last year.
Uh, it's gone up a little bit, I think last year was around two thousand.
I saw that.
For the license, I don't know. Started. This, I think it was seven thousand dollars for the initial license. And then every yearly update was only like seven hundred and fifty or a thousand dollars and it's just continued to increase.
And this. Quick explanation what all this does.
Uh, this this does our design work, so for us to continue doing. Uh, our own plans for asphalt paving or bridge replacement with anything, we use the software to develop those set plans.
Okay, and this is the. The annual subscription as it says.
Yeah.
The pay yearly.
So this takes over, I believe, in February.
All right, I'll make the most approved quote for AutoCAD for twenty twenty-three at twenty-two, six and forty-eight. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in the second to approve the AutoCAD. For twenty twenty-three. Any other discussion? All in favor, I?
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carry.
The second item that I've got on the agenda is to approve next year's bridge inspection. Uh, with Chuck Britton or thirty-nine hundred, this is for. Two bridges that have been inspected yearly, that would be. The Vine Bridge and the Kirkwood Bridge East of Rick's home base. So the the Pony Trust in Vernon Township and then the High Trust in Holy Township. And then we also have fifteen bridges that are just shorter than twenty feet that we started inspecting on a five-year increment. And this is year five, so it's maybe the second time they're inspecting those.
Okay, that covers the bridge inspection for.
For for next year, they just completed, uh, this year's inspections last month. And talking to them last week, it sounds like they should be coming here in the next week or so, then. Those inspection reports.
Do I make the motion to approve the quote for three thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars for twenty twenty-three at bridge inspections?
Uh, second, we have a motion in a second. Um, are those in line with what we got last year, are they up a little?
Yeah, I think they went up, uh, like fifteen or twenty dollars.
Well, we better approve that quick before.
They changed.
Yeah. And we've used them for as long as I've been around.
Yeah, uh, we did McClure Engineering, I want to say, for about my first eight years here, and then we put it out for. Uh, quotes for all of the adjacent contractors to. Put a bid in. And Chuck Britton worked on them probably for the last ten, twelve years.
All right, we have a motion in a second, any other discussion? All in favor, I?
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carry.
If I can push it from the other direction.
Yeah, the wind's blowing from the opposite direction right now, we should get a little bit of reprieve because the north ditch is. North and west ditch are empty because everything's been blown in, so.
Quite so bad.
I know we've got, uh, payload overhead now towards Saturn exterior. Where one of the largest stress are at, my guess is today we'll have Monica fired up. And we'll be running around with a snow blower. Pulling material on the road and then blowing it out.
So I was gonna say, you wanna explain who Monica is?
So that's our. That's our nineteen seventy-eight Oshkosh snow blower. Um. We've had it around for for quite a while. Next years, yeah, it still works, requires a little bit of maintenance, usually batteries over two years. Place a lot of the electrical and hydraulic lines.
Yeah.
The the cost for a replacement similar to that, we looked at. Two or three years ago for one that would mount on the front of, uh, one of our payloads. And at that time, it was two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand, so I'm betting it's a little bit after a million dollars now.
Are we going to do any snow fence making with the hump and fence or fields?
We have done some, yep, uh, everywhere that we've got snow fence put up, we've been pushing that up. But we're gonna, with farmers that will allow.
Oh, we do.
Will be going out in their fields and wintering.
I see they were trying to do some of that over east of Clarion.
Okay.
Um. But please make sure we have permission so we don't have to fight that.
Yeah.
If we do it.
Yeah, we will make sure that we've got permission before we go out there.
And once again, I would. Pass on. Thank you for all of the hours they put in, probably didn't seem like Christmas for for them when they sat in a truck and. Motor patrol most of the weekend, but we appreciate it, I know there's people out there that were mad that they didn't get the onto the gravel roads, but.
Uh, we got to gravel this Saturday, um, they said Thursday was a normal day, we. Chased blacktops all day, uh, Friday. Started out as a as a normal day, which is poor visibility and it quickly deteriorated even worse to the point that it wasn't safe, we pulled off. State clouds pulled off, they closed I thirty-five down, uh, they closed seventeen, they closed parcel one sixty-nine, we did have one emergency call out. Uh, I'm gonna talk to dispatch about it, I don't think we probably should have gone out, but, uh, we did send two guys out Friday evening. To give a guy into his property where the furnace had failed and wife and kids were at home. Um. Saturday we got up, we ran blacktops and then threw everything at gravel roads. Got everything open one direction. For gravel road, Sunday morning, we got up, did the same thing, sent everybody out. Ran the blacktops quick for two hours and then threw the trucks on gravels too, so that we could get. Everybody out of there.
Is the pass?
Yep. And then yesterday we ran just blacktops with two, three hours in the morning and then. And then I think, uh. Boat and Hardy Shop did do an afternoon run, but they said they didn't do it by much.
All right, well, thank you again.
Yep, it could be a long one.
Yeah.
Shouldn't have that way.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thanks Ben.
Randy?
You passed around. I, uh, scheduled to be here last Monday, but I was ill for two or three days and so I missed this and. Couple of the, uh, meetings it has the comprehensive plan with Midas, so I apologize, but I did send out an email to you. With this information, I don't know if you read it, but, uh. I was contacted by a company named I Works. And then Pogo Utah and presented, uh, information over an email. On. They provide software program. That provides for counties, cities, or whatever that deal with permits. Of of many different kinds. And, uh, this company, uh. Gay provided a, uh, just a demonstration which I watched for, I don't know, a half hour, forty-five minutes of what the software can do. And, uh, it it was quite impressive as far as, uh, we within that short period of time where I could see. What this does is basically, and it says they're on the front page, takes you from. Uh. Basically what we use right now and probably have used forever, basically paper copies. Of information for permits that are that are provided, they may range from this. You know, two or three pages to this. Depending upon, you know, what the permit is and the information that comes in. And so I, uh, it's it's quite varied in what I have to deal with now, most of the things that I have in these folders. There's also copies kept here at the Otter's office, I keep a copy and as I indicated on my email, I also try to keep as much as I can. On, uh, electronic, uh, jump drives, so on my on my computer as well. So if need be, I can always retrieve that, but the main probably legal stuff is probably still on paper. And so, um. This, in the demonstration that I gave, and you can look at the information that this person has provided. And maybe especially the second page, I think it's the second page. This was an email, this is the text from an email that was sent. And that, uh, we basically laid out the things that this can do for you. Or for a county, city, whatever. And it's rather impressive as far as the things that are listed there. Um. They have quite a varied, I think, number of of people that use this. And, uh. Some of the things that I that I was very impressed with, one of them was that this can be customized for what you need. Uh, they can take that software and and, you know, configure it at what we would possibly need, there might be things we wouldn't need. You know, in that software program. Uh, but there would be some things that we would need. The other thing that was, I felt was very important, was training. And it's not just initial training, it's ongoing training. So I could be training for somewhere down the road, you know, somebody, maybe we want people from the courthouse. Maybe to use it for other things, I don't know, but let's say. I fall over dead tomorrow or whatever, next person can be trained and you could be trained and it's all part of it. And with that is ongoing management of the system. There actually have a person that is assigned as the management for each individual, uh, account that they use. I think that was extremely important. Uh, I reached, I was reaching out to a couple of different people. Uh, one was Jack Swarm from Mount Pleasant, the, uh, the presenter that, uh, presented this to me, said Mount Pleasant has used this program. For a long time, now several years. So I called this guy, Jack Swarm, talked to him for probably twenty minutes. And he said they they've used it, uh, they like it very much, he really couldn't say anything bad about it. And, uh, of course, in a city situation, they might be looking at, uh, many various types of permits that they work with. He indicated that, uh, he had gone and and looked at some other communities that use it. And, uh, he thought the training was good and the support after the fact was also very important. And then I went and I talked to, or I called and talked to Karen Lawler in Fort Dodge, who I already knew. Uh, when I worked at Habitat for Humanity and worked with permits for the city. Uh, she was very, very helpful and, um. Spoke very highly of how they use that. She basically said it's the brain or the heart of their system. Meaning that they they could take a lot of different things, different types of permits. For recording purposes, make it also accessible to contractors, those kind of things, and. What it ends up with and what I could understand is. It's very accessible and it's very concentrated and it's it's made for what you want it to be. And it's understandable. As you can look at the front page there, you can download maps, pictures, go on so forth. Uh, the guy from Mount Pleasant indicated, uh, he uses it onsite, he'll go out in the field. He's got a tablet, you can access it wherever, access it wherever you can access the internet. He can input information right on the spot. Whereas in my case, I usually make drawings and sketches and I use Beacon Program to make aerial views, I go home. Draw things in, I record it that way, so, you know. And our our permit applications are. Adequate at best, they need to be changed, this could also be included in that. Uh, so as far as efficiency, they said it helps with that a great deal. Um. I I guess I would say for the most part, again, this would be doing electronically. What is occurring now, it's completely web-based. And it would provide you then the capability again is accessing it from just about anywhere. The only thing about it, and I'm somewhat old school, uh, is the fact that. I'm always concerned about electronics and things like that as far as, uh, reliability or accessibility by somebody you wouldn't want involved, right? So, I like I said, I'm old school, I would probably recommend keeping at least the very minimal amounts of paper copies. You know, of maybe just the permit itself, then anything else could be accessed, uh, you know, electronically. So, um. I I would say overall, I look at it as as an addition. To what we've already talked about in upgrading comprehensive plan, the ordinance, the maps. And so I looked at this, this would be another, uh, part of upgrading so that. When we get all said and done with all of this, uh, we can say that, you know. We're as efficient as possible and as accurate as possible, making it easier to ask people or answer people's questions. They deal with that a lot, people call up, they wanna know this or that or whatever, and with this. Uh, and maps and those kind of things, but they, I can. I can be more confident in that I can tell them the exact correct, uh, information. The, uh, the page on there, the last couple of pages. Two or three pages is the application for service and the cost of this. Uh, I would say, uh, the first page there, under the, uh, service agreement, I'd go down to number three. And I mentioned this, I Works will, this is the second, right, and it's sentence. I Works will assign a senior account manager and account management team to implement services and applications. And that's ongoing, Karen Lawler said that she works with an individual, you know, I Works, and she's tremendous in helping her out if they have questions. And so she couldn't, that she thought that was an extremely important things because we all know things come up. You know, that you don't anticipate. Um, on the one, one thing I had a little bit of concern is, is on, uh, it would be. Number seven on that. Or it says termination. Either party may terminate their disagreement after initial three-year term. So in other words, if you're making an agreement with this company, it's on a three-year basis. And that can be terminated by either party. But you're still paying for a three-year term. That's one concern that I had is not just on a one-year basis, you know, so. And you can you can read the rest of it, um, the basic cost. If you go over to the last page, it looks like this. Okay, it gives you the layout of the cost. And, uh. Implementation and and setup. They said right now, I guess it's like buying cars, maybe this was a good timing year to buy a car, I don't know. But he said until the end of the year, they would be a thousand dollars on the implementation setup cost. So that would be rather than fifteen hundred, be five hundred dollars. And then you can see there five hours of G I S integration and data conversion. Uh, that's included in the system, data conversion itself is included. Uh, the one-time setup total, again, is, uh, five hundred dollars with that, that is part of that, and then the grand total due per year. Is, uh, for the first year, that five, that five hundred dollars is three thousand dollars. And so it's twenty-five hundred dollars per year on that three-year term, with the exception of the first, uh, first one. My concern is. It's a little bit untimely here, you know, to to make the request, I just wanted to make sure I give you. Um, the best information what and what they gave me. From what I could say, I would recommend it, I don't know if I'd recommend it exactly right now, except I can say a thousand dollars. I asked, uh, the guy from Mount Pleasant if he looked at other systems, he said yes, he said this is pretty comparable. Especially since you're getting ongoing training and management from from the company. I I would, and I haven't, I haven't been able to look because of time at other systems that might be out there. So maybe that would be a good idea. This just came up within the last month and so I thought I would present it to you, you know. Like I say, I say you can buy a car, I'll take this much more off by the end of the year, but, uh, you know, so. The timing is not great. But and also individually indicated that if you would want to have a demonstration, be more than happy to give you a demonstration as well. Uh, but, you know, internet-based, uh, presentation.
What about, you said all your old is in paperwork and stuff like that, would that get converted into the new system?
It certainly could be, it would be probably time consuming, except for the fact if I had large quantities of of information. I think it could be just taken down to the very minimum.
Right.
What were, what's the permit said, maybe aerial views, some pictures, so it wouldn't take as long, maybe as doing the whole. The whole file that you might have on something, but I. And I haven't gone back and looked and see how many years of files.
I've been doing it since I've been doing.
I know we're trying to digitize.
I've been doing this for four years, I've got two. Full boxes, you know, and really cities and things like that, larger cities would probably have a lot more, you know. So that's another factor. But I'm I'm looking at it as as an administrator, uh. With all the other things we're looking at to upgrade, so the zone, I think this, something like this will be, uh, beneficial.
Would people be able to get online then and fill out the permits then?
I believe that's right, yeah. Most of the time now, when somebody requires about a permit, I tell them you can either pick one up at the Otter's office. Or if you send me an email, I'll I'll send you a copy, or I say you can go to the county website, you can download it from that. If it's not, uh, you know, feasible for you to bring it in physically to the Otter's office. Send it to me attached on an email, I'll use that as the original. So it's, I try to do it as variable as possible.
Right.
And, uh, normally I would say half and half, half of them bring them in, half of them send it to them.
Right.
You know, so, uh, but again. The permits are fine for what it is now, but after the comprehensive plan and the ordinance, uh, is complete. I think those need to be redone as well, and I think there should be probably several people involved in that. You know, uh, because one person may miss something. You know, and it may be where you would have end up with maybe four or five different permits, where basically now we deal with two. Building permits and special exception use permits. And like I said, it's adequate for now, but looking ahead, it might be, it might be better off. I'm sorry again, not being able to bring this to you last week, I apologize for that, I didn't think you wanted to be exposed to somebody with a cold.
No, you're good, I just, yeah.
Even though we're sending orders, well, maybe.
Well, the only thing that I see is, uh, this thirtieth is Friday.
I know.
And it does sound like this will be getting. You know, permitting and other things that, you know, to go along with this. So. You know, it it just sounds like the correct way to go. And it sounded like you did you pretty much a lot of due diligence research for talking to other entities that are using this. That's always good, like when you mentioned car vehicle purchases, it's always good to talk to someone that has the same vehicle.
The guy from my works provided the information to people within the state.
I see that.
And so, and that was helpful, I didn't have to research myself.
Doesn't sound per your description that you took to anyone, any entity using this that wasn't satisfied.
Exactly.
They all said it was a a very helpful.
Yeah.
Uh, program for them to use.
The only thing I would say is I don't know the difference between, let's say, a large amount of permits as compared to. Uh, you know, maybe what we have, I mean. Uh, you know, maybe what we have. I mean, obviously, we're not doing.
No.
You know, a thousand permits, you know, in a week or a month even, you know, but again. Bring it up to something other than just the paper.
I think it's past time. I mean, really, looks like maybe the, uh, assessor right here will use it too.
Yeah, and I didn't inquire about that, so I don't know, but Karen Lawler, poor Dodge said that. More than her department utilizing it, and she's kind of in charge, I think, of. Organizing a lot of different types of permits, so maybe they customize it for each individual need. Uh, and I can. She was, she said, come on down and show you what we do, you know, so she's really a really. Efficient and nice lady. She's just, I've always been extremely impressed with her, I'd say she's credible.
Where is she located?
Poor Dodge, poor Dodge, it's the city.
City of.
Probably wouldn't be a bad idea. Now, this G S I mapping, isn't that what you use too?
G I S.
G I S, well, I don't know what I think, but I'm glad you knew what I meant.
Yeah, um, we've talked about wanting to get the county map with G I S. A lot of counties are starting to utilize them where it might be just an additional layer on your beacon. Um, for us on secondary roads, it would have our right away listed on the maps. It would have, uh, zoomed in to say intersection and be able to pull up section quarter data. Counties like, the one that comes to mind is Michigan County, they've got a, a G I S. Slash I can person that takes care of all of that. At Dr. Chris, um, a couple of weeks ago.
You guys know those.
He said, yeah, maybe something down the line, but right now he's. Swarmed and inundated with everything on the I T side of things.
I did, I did think of the, the connectedness to other, you know. Because right now, unless you go to whatever office, they're not gonna have accessibility to. You know, was there a permit for this or whatever, you know, so you could put on there. I think it would be working enough to be able to have people on there you want to have, and then. Keeping people off you wouldn't.
Right.
You know.
It's probably, most programs are set up that way, they give users, you know, oh, true, what do they call it, um, rights or whatever you have rights on. Yeah, so that would be a good thing.
And I told the gentleman from the company that I would get back to him after this meeting, I explained that I wasn't able to be here last week. And so I told him I'd get back to him. I said, don't anticipate anything, cause I don't know.
Do you think he would extend that if he, if he talked to him and explained his situation, that he'd extend it so we could have our I T person look at it and maybe give that thousand dollar off of. One more week, you know, week past our next meeting.
Well, I'm, I'm a real, we have a dealer on cars, so absolutely, I would try to do that.
Cause it would be good for Chris to.
Explain to him that you missed claims in the next available time that you could even process that would be. Two weeks, two weeks.
But like you saying. Looking at it maybe under a microscope still better.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not, you know, it's not like it's, it's a huge amount of money.
I'm surprised it's that reasonable beyond, don't, don't tell that to the guy, but.
No.
For what it does, I think it's a pretty reasonable.
Yeah.
Rate.
I think, I think the training would, as I mentioned, uh, the training, I think would be like five sessions training. So. And again, if you would want to have a demonstration, he said he would, he would do that. But the first question I would ask, can you extend that discount?
Yeah.
Probably not.
Unless it's half thing of it, that's about a thousand dollars, that's twenty five hundred dollar a year subscription. I mean, it, I think you're gonna chase this around and come to the conclusion, yes, this is a very good deal.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know if we can make a motion on it, but you can check on all that fun stuff, but then sure, it's great, and then you spend another thousand dollars to. I, I don't think that, I don't think that this requires. Any more research in what Randy's already done to, to prove it, to be honest with them. Let's say it gets into the modern age, be checked for people that are driving the same vehicle, they like it, it's, uh. You know, it's not a hundred thousand dollar G I S program. Speaking of.
It's a three year contract, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And also I, again, I'll say, we haven't got the mapping stuff done for Midas yet. And she said she had it to me like.
That's all.
Months ago.
That's all, yeah, Randy, that's also been going on for the four years you've been doing it.
Well, probably longer, I know, but it's actually in their hands, it's been paid for, I just haven't got it back from her yet. And I don't know why, but I'll be finding out more about that as well, but I think this. Along with the re- remapping, again, quality and accuracy. I think that's important.
Well, my question is, is this gonna improve? Someone out in the country that is filling out a permit on, online versus the ones that don't feel they have to do the permit?
I, I wouldn't say that, no, I don't think, I think that has to be. An educational and informational thing that this wouldn't provide, this is more after the fact. When you're getting permits for whatever, it may provide, and I don't know, it may provide a better explanation. Than what, than what we're providing now through the radio or newspaper or whatever. But again, if somebody doesn't wanna go and look for it. Or don't think they need to look for it, or have no idea about it, as many others say, I can't see where this would improve that. I wish it would.
I wish it would too, I mean, for that. Alone, we could jump all over.
Yeah, and you gotta remember also with the House File twenty five twelve with agricultural buildings, uh, being. Exempt now, definition of agricultural buildings is has, is a little more detailed, you know, but, uh. Yeah, I mean. They, they would consider, I don't have to worry about it at all.
Yeah.
Well, but you're also dealing with use, you know, are you. Gonna use that for something that is not zoned for, talking about a special exception use. Uh, you're looking at, uh, not just principal uses, accessory uses, where does that fall? Uh, a building that maybe gives accessory use to what is already there, uh, principal use buildings. There's some real gray areas there, and so I. You're right, more money could go into that part of it. I'm not sure if we, if, if it's gonna be that much of a benefit and throw a whole bunch more money. At that part of it, to be honest with you.
Right.
I think we're doing an adequate job with that. Couldn't we do better? Uh, yes.
But this is. This is a. Computer digitized version of all of the box of papers.
Yeah.
Essentially, that gets all the correct data, when you get the permits and all the information that Randy gathers is. A click away to being there, like you said, maps, references, permits, it's there, it's not in a shoebox someplace or. Um, dusty old file, and if you put it in there when the permit happens. And if you ever need to look back historically, it's gonna be much easier to find that.
I would say again, I'm doing the, what this would do, but I'm doing the paper.
Right.
What the auditors have are the essential things that I believe should be in there.
Right.
Record. Mine, it's also mine, but I'm also keeping other things through that process. But again, that's paper, the other things that are, I think are most important, I'm. Keeping it electronically, this puts it all into one.
This is in one spot. So, if future, you know, sure Randy at some point in time is gonna walk away from this. You're gonna need a new, it'll be tough to find one as good a job as he has been doing, but at some point in time. What's the record in the accessibility, whether it's a susser, auditor, someone else has ability to look at it. From the permitting process, then all your information is there, not in a file thing that. You know, got burned up in a fire, and there is no way, we have all that information, it's lost. I, I just don't see chasing this around, I think this.
I haven't looked, I don't know how many paper files there are on zoning, but they're somewhere and, and.
Yeah.
Over a long, long, long period of time.
Historically, you're only gonna, and Sandy brought that up, which I know, you're only gonna be able to go back so far. Fifty years, but to, to the stuff that you have can maybe get processed right to, you know.
As time permits, or if you even want, I mean.
Yeah, what if you need, if it's.
Maybe even just in your lifetime that you've been.
That's getting shorter. I just think, I would recommend, yes, that it would go back at least what I have.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, yeah, we would be able to do that.
Yeah.
And then that provides somebody else that will do this in the future.
Have that much history, and then all that information is, is kept moving forward.
I, I think she's running this by Chris first, cause I don't know for sure if the software we have can't already do this.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know.
I highly doubt it.
Not an action item on our agenda, so we can't act on it.
Well, it's pleading sanity when you talk to the guy.
That's he's.
Bring up, perfect.
Yeah.
Uh, tell him that claims is passed, uh, we can make a decision next week with an action item.
And again, I, as I say, at, at the very beginning. Uh, the training, the management, the ongoing help, I think are important.
That's pretty valuable.
Because, like you said, if you change people from doing what I'm doing.
Somebody needs to go back and get some training.
Right, or they can call and ask questions, and somebody is specifically assigned to Humble County.
Ben, would you wanna be included like in the presentation of this?
Yeah, sure.
That's what I was wondering, you know, maybe, maybe you could get with Ben and Chris and see if you could. When it would be work to do a presentation, so that all, all three of them can see it, maybe one or two of us.
I'm gonna be gone, as I indicated on my last report, January, want to visit friends and. And family, so, uh, maybe sometime down the road, it wouldn't have. You know, they'll provide us an extension, fine, if not, I'm just telling them to do it sometime, you know, in the future. It doesn't have to be done right now, you know, obviously. We're still doing it as we have.
Right, but see what he'll do for next, how long he would extend it, and, and if you can't be for the presentation, it sounds like you've already seen one, maybe. It could be Ben, Chris, or maybe a couple of us.
I, I, I can be.
You know, so that we can see it.
I can be, you know.
Remotely.
Available remotely.
Okay.
Not a problem.
Does that sound good to everybody?
I think get it done through it and later, you can get something figured out in the next week, and he'll extend the discount, and we'll put it as an action.
I can at least give you the report of that, I can do that by email and see what he's.
What are you, you're leaving physically?
Probably the first and next week.
We, we have a meeting a week from today.
I won't be here.
You won't be here.
But you can have it as an action item.
You can, maybe you can research what you need to this week.
I can, and then I'll send you an email with what I have found out, so you have it before.
That, yeah.
Beforehand.
Yeah.
So.
I did actually look at this, thank you for sending it.
Yeah.
Ahead of time, so I've seen this on your email.
Well, maybe there could be such a thing as a present, since Eric is, you know, maybe Eric and Ben and, and, um. Uh, Chris.
Yeah, it might be.
And then, I mean, I would even listen in on to it.
It might be the fact, somebody else punches that and they go, nah, we don't. You're only looking at one person and that's me. And I know I deal with it a lot, so maybe I'm a little more, you know. I mean, it, I looked at it, I've thought about this a long time, this could be a whole lot more efficient. And more accurate than what we're doing.
Right, oh, yeah.
You know, but I didn't have the, I didn't have the understanding that maybe this, this type of thing was even there.
Yeah.
And it came to me as just a so- uh, solicitation by this company, so.
Yeah, you know.
But see if we can get into the modern age. Make things simpler, more.
With towns using it around us, we know, at least have the ability to say there. It's in the area, and they're happy with what they have, so I think it's something we should look into.
Absolutely, get us what you can by next week, even if we won't be here.
I'm gonna send us something out to you on an email.
Give a thousand dollar discount if that's the direction to go, and get it taken care of.
Most car dealers don't do that, but.
Well.
Maybe, it doesn't hurt that.
Like I said, pleaded sanity, uh, illness, something.
Right.
The, the fact that we didn't have the opportunity a week ago, but we had it today, and then.
We can't vote on it, so the only way that we can is next week, so if he. Is interested in selling it, that's the best we can do.
Yep, do what we can do.
Otherwise, it'll give us an opportunity to go look at something else too.
True.
So, see what you can come up with and let us know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
All right, we go to. What do we do, you wanna do this?
Janitor.
Custodial. Well, I was gonna do that, but.
You went.
Yeah, so let's.
Oh, sorry, Dan.
I'm sure, sure you got lost.
You're behind Ben, I didn't even see you.
So we have approval application for a credit card to the treasurer's office. I mean, that's because Jana Bratton. So hers hasn't been canceled, well, we just transferred.
Had the credit card in her name with the treasurer's office. She's no longer here.
Right, right.
So we need to put it into my name, so I can be able to book like hotel rooms and conferences and something like that.
Okay.
So that one has been destroyed or changed?
Bratton's has been canceled then?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's just for the, your office, correct?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, maybe for, um, any of my girls, we going to conferences.
Yeah, what, what type of limit are you looking at on that?
We put five, that's what I talked to Trish, and they had five on there, so I guess. Obviously, tons will ever get close to that.
Right, right. Well, if everything is in order, and we just need an approval for the application of the credit card from treasurer's office, I would make that motion.
Awesome.
We have a motion in a second to approve a credit card, uh. Changing from Jan Bratton to Jana, Jana's official title, so that they can operate like they have been.
Mm-hmm.
Um, all in favor, I.
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 Oppose same sign, motion carries.
And I think I have a paper for you, and Bruce.
Those ones is not the credit card, Bill coming to me, I'm good with signing it.
We're your co-signer.
Yeah.
It's just that in United Center.
Okay, we'll do it. Ben, is this? Do I need to sign these, do you go?
I had to sign the one.
Okay. But I don't need to sign. Perfect. All right, uh, last week or so, we've had a couple of interviews on the, the janitor position that we hired. At full time and we were promoting, so.
Correct, so we promoted Paul Larson to the full time position at a rate of twenty two dollars and ninety five cents per hour. With the increase being the normal July one, um, increase.
Which Paul was our part time?
Paul was our part time, so he was promoted up. And then for our part time position for fifteen hours per week will be Will- Wilson. At Tevera. At Teveria, I had it right the first, thank you, I said. Eighteen dollars and fifty cents per hour with a three month evaluation.
Are you making said motion?
Since I did the interview, should I do that or just some, okay, um, I will make that motion to hire both positions at the rates. And timelines that I had mentioned.
Uh, second.
So we have a motion to promote Paul from the part time to the full time and the. Uh, hiring of Wilson, and I'm not, you know, tempted. Um, as the part time with the three month, uh, evaluation and fifteen hours a week or thirty hours a period. That's correct, right?
Correct.
All in favor, I.
I.
Oppose same sign, motion carries. We have committee reports, uh, from last week.
Okay. Tuesday, I had a daycare meeting. It was the twentieth. And then our safety was on the twenty first. And then I also had an I S A C, um, education committee, it was Zoom on the twenty first. And that's what I can remember from my phone, I don't have my phone.
Oh, wanna use my, my book?
That's safety and what? I I said education. I said, I'm sorry. I don't think I had anything for other than phone calls. I didn't have an actual.
Trying to find Ben's email today.
We did get, and um I wanted to thank Chris for that, too. All the different um counties are putting on their um website. The link to sign up or or apply for our. Executive Director for the I W D for the regions, so it sounds like a lot of them got them on there, so hopefully that'll. Bring in, you know, a vast variety throughout all the counties. That's what I worked on last week.
Okay, Monday I had a board of adjustment meeting. At the courthouse. Um. Sorry, I forgot to leave some media on your camera. I think that's the only official one. I saw this whole whole whole.
Nice picture of the paper.
It's good to see that some of them didn't like you as much as.
Oh, yeah, there were.
Other ones.
There was a lot of, so many little ones this year. Little tiny ones, huh? Oh, all the way from. Three weeks old.
You just heard this second hand, you you weren't. Anywhere near it.
I wasn't nowhere near it, no.
We don't wanna wreck anybody's belief or anything. Well, good.
Uh this past Monday, the nineteenth, I had a building families meeting and clearing. Got there and back.
Road's good.
There was fine going, the lower is coming back. Yeah, but the visibility was good, and that was when we were getting the snow, that started on this, was on Wednesday, of course, so. But no, it wasn't. You know, we just had to drive accordingly. If it stayed like that, and the wind wouldn't have picked up, it'd been fine.
Did you say Monday or was it Wednesday?
No, it was Monday last week.
Okay.
Nineteen.
Yep. I thought you said something about Wednesday then later too, so.
Not yet, but I'm going to. Uh on Wednesday. Morning, uh. Anyway, by Wednesday morning, um have a. Zoom meeting with the GeoCom people that was essentially our nine one one executive board. That gathering some information. From the GeoCom folks, so we had that half hour Zoom meeting, so they could explain things to us, and we met at the O C. And uh that was very informative. And then after that, over the lunch hour, came up here for Jana Bratton's retirement party. And so did Sandy, cause I saw her, and she had her Christmas dress on.
Yes, I did. My retro.
Very well, it's, yeah, it's supposed to be. And then that was, that was it for this past week. Okay, the only night I had was uh had to run down to T P Anderson and sign checks for I D D A on Monday. And you get down to Northwest part of the world?
You did, but. You were supposed to come up with the papers, and I haven't, cause I couldn't find them.
Oh, okay.
And was it Brenda?
Brenda.
Was on the phone.
Oh, okay.
I didn't get to talk to her. I just remembered that.
Well, let's try again.
All right, for me, on Wednesday, we had the safety meeting, um. I guess I would just say that Ben has put together all of that, um the CPR first aid. Court house training. Uh scheduled for January twentieth, right?
Yeah.
And the second secondary roads, I'm assuming, did you get that in before the?
Uh we know if I done that, we had to cancel last Thursday. Uh because of the weather. And they're supposed to get back with us when available. Um where we'll get our schedule.
Okay, and also uh. Wednesday morning, um Jim Grunbeck came in, uh and I am assuming you all saw the. The your emails from Kyle.
Yeah.
Which, I mean, he covered everything from. Uh the amount of hotels that were open to.
The very.
Knowing. Um that no one was stranded, or like Ben said, they had to go on one emergency call, so it was. It was fairly uh well covered. I think that. The county did a. Great job doing their homework. I'm, I know that there's a couple of small towns that even had places that. Had opened up, the churches were available, people got stranded.
Yeah.
To stay in there, so all in all, I think it, there's always room for improvement, and I guess hopefully we can look at it and see where we can make. Correction if we need to, but I thought everybody did a great job. I know the grocery stores. Were starting to get a little nervous, but.
So.
Lot of bare shelves.
Well, it was. First daughter's a manager at Fairway, and they didn't get trucks for like three days.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah.
They said down in Boone, um they decided that they weren't gonna put a truck out on the road if they couldn't see or. Ability to have some company miss a Christmas or whatever.
I could, that's, I give them credit for that.
Yes, and I guess the. I didn't go to Jan's coffee, but I gave her, I talked to her, uh we went in and signed. Wednesday morning before our safety meeting, we signed the papers for her. They did the count.
I was a witness.
Um, they counted it over there, cause I said it'd be a lot closer to U B N's, right, so everything worked out good. We signed the papers and. Jan is off, so we thank her for her service. The years that she was here, so. I guess that was all I had, um. If you have anything else.
No.
Okay. I'm going to. Next week, we, do we have to do the? It's war in. Do we have to do that before or during, or how does that go? We have three that.
Uh I think we do it during, we run upstairs. Right, well, last time I did it here, when I, the first, my first time, I I did it right here. We did it in the room.
Yeah, the P G S, whoever came down and.
I've done it, I've done it both ways.
We did it both ways. First time I went up, we went upstairs, and the second time did it in here.
Yeah, I'll see Sherry come, and we talked about it this morning, so, yeah.
Well, you have.
We opened up the meeting with the old board. Then we do the wiring in.
And I'll do my best to get my drawer cleaned up, cause it's, I've been told that when they open it, it's fairly full.
Yeah, I know.
Relatively, I've seen it, I've seen it worse.
It'll be worse when I get down.
Occasionally, when you're not here.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
All right. We have a motion in a second to adjourn, when we have the discussion.